Good afternoon. I'm Sean O'Brien. I'm the Kingston Town Moderator. Today is April 25th and we're here to preview our annual town meeting, which will be held May 11th at 9:00 AM at the Kingston Intermediate School, here in Kingston. And to go through the 34 articles with me, listed on the warrant, is our Town Administrator, Keith Hickey.
Hello.
Hey Sean, thanks for having me.
How are you?
Great. How are you?
Good. How's the process of putting the warrant together?
It's been, it's been, it's been like it normally is. It's been a long and a lot of questions, but now that we're done, hopefully everybody can attend town meeting and express their concerns and support and we'll have a budget to move forward.
Okay. A couple of things before we start. I will be putting together a consent agenda and that's where I move multiple articles with a single vote. And I'll list, as we go through the articles, I'll list which ones I think I'm going to put on the consent agenda and that can be uploaded to the town's website along with the other materials prior to the meeting.
Absolutely, yep.
The other thing I'm going to suggest is Article 34, which is to modify and attach accessory housing unit bylaw. That is the last article. I intend on making a motion, if I get a second, to move that up. I think it's a relatively significant article and I don't want to wait to the end of the meeting as people start to trickle out. Again, it's the town's meeting, if you don't want to move it up, but it could have some significant effects on the town and I think the majority of the town meeting shortly after the budget should take part in that. And I'll also, in case you like to fast forward during these previews, we will get into Article 34 and I believe we have someone from the planning board going to join us at the end to discuss Article 34, so stay tuned for that, the consent agenda. But without further ado, would you mind just commenting on each article?
I don't know. Happy to do it.
To help members maybe have a swift and spirited debate at the town meeting?
We can hope.
So obviously, the first article is prior year's bills. That was supported by the Board of Selectmen in the Finance Committee. It's a four-fifths and in essence, you have a couple outstanding bills from last year that need to be paid, correct?
We do. We have $2,900 in outstanding bills that did not get paid before June 30th, so we need to get two-thirds, I'm sorry, four-fifths approval from the voters. It's more of a housekeeping item ideally and unfortunately have these, seem to have these every year, but shouldn't take too long. They're being funded through some balances of unexpected articles from previous years, so it doesn't affect the people's tax rate or free cash.
Okay. Moving on to Article number two, that is the Close Smart Growth Stabilization Fund. It's a two-thirds vote. It was supported by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. It's a majority vote and what are we trying to accomplish here?
So we're returning the $600,000 that the state of Massachusetts gave the town of Kingston a number of years ago to incent Kingston to approve a 40R development. That 40R development ultimately never happened, so it's a housekeeping issue, that $600,000, because it wasn't expended for the purposes that was given to us by the state for, we just need to return that.
Okay. Moving on to Article number three, which I intend to put on the consent agenda. This is supplemental F-24 town department budgets. It looks like there's two items, one for $35,000 and one for $50,000. Favorable votes by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. And what do you say about this one?
Sure. So a couple of things. The veterans for $35,000, we've had more veterans coming forward looking for some assistance, so this $35,000 would allow us to fund what we expect to need for veterans funding for the remainder of fiscal '24. Fire Department overtime is a request of $50,000. The fire chief and the fire department have been addressing and dealing with several on-duty injuries that have occurred this year that have caused lengthy times where those firefighters have been out of service, out of work, and we've had to pay overtime. The fire department believes that the overtime line will be over expended by about $122,000 for the year. He has found other budgetary savings to offset over half of that, but he does need, is seeking $50,000 to allow him to continue with full staffing through the end of June.
And what kind of, just on the veterans, is that medical benefits or do you know what some of that funding is used for?
That funding is solely used for paying of overtime of firefighters to fill shifts of people being injured. Oh, I'm sorry, the veterans piece?
Yes, I-
I apologize. So the veterans piece, we've got veterans who come in looking for assistance for any number of things. The town gets reimbursed 75% in the following year, but we provide the benefits, medical support, things of that nature for veterans who are in need, who are Kingston residents.
Oh, that's awesome. And now we're going to move on to Article four, which is supplemental F-24 wastewater enterprise fund. And this is to see if the town will vote to transfer unexpected town meeting articles and there's a sum of $601,327.27 to the wastewater fund balance. What's going on here?
So the wastewater department is not collecting revenues in the same amount as they expected for a couple of reasons. They anticipated more connections, more water connections, which means more wastewater connections to pay off the new debt we have for the upgrade to the treatment facility, because we have no water connections, we have no sewer connections, and that new revenue is not coming in. So they are frankly $601,000 in an estimated way short in revenues to support their operating budget. So these, this request will be to close previous year wastewater warrant article balances into the, basically their free cash to use to offset their operating loss.
Yeah, I see here. It says unexpected articles, $188,000 from annual town meeting 518 and then another $412,000 from annual town meeting 522. Where's that money? How's that used in relation to the?
So the sewer department would have had a couple of articles, Article seven in the 2018 meeting and Article eight in the 2022 meeting. They were wastewater articles in all likelihood for some type of project or larger project that may have been bonded. The estimates that they had were greater than what the actual bid numbers came in at, so you can, you can close, basically what they're doing is they're closing out that funding authorization and applying it to another funding, they're seeking to reauthorize those funds from whatever the projects were in 2018 and 2022 to fund the fiscal '24 operating budget.
Gotcha. Need a break yet?
Nope, not yet.
All right.
Getting there.
Article five, F-24 Community Preservation Fund appropriations. In essence, we're trying to fix the wells at Opachinsky irrigation, or-
Come on, you can do this.
At the, at the, at the park.
Yes. So, and a couple, and one thing I just want to make people aware of, this community preservation project is a standalone project rather than having it included in all the other capital, I'm sorry, community preservation fund projects later on in the warrant. The reason for that is we've identified this as a fiscal '24 project. There are funds in the capital, I'm sorry, the community preservation fund to fund this project, the fiscal '24. The wells that we have at Opachinsky Park now are not operating, so we can't irrigate the fields. If this, with having this warrant article separate and indicating a fiscal '24 warrant article, if this is approved at town meeting in a couple of weeks, they can start with this project the day of the town meeting, the day after they get authorization. They won't have to wait till July 1st, like you have to do with every other appropriation that's approved at town meeting. So it was done intentionally to try to get the irrigation systems up and running as quickly as we could and not have to wait till after July to get that project moving.
And I'm guessing if you don't get the water running, then the fields get destroyed and then they're coming back for more money to replace all the fields?
Could be, yeah, all likelihood. So it's an important project. There's been a lot of money spent down there over the years to get it into the condition it's in now. Irrigating those fields helps keep those fields as pristine as they are.
Ready for the big one?
Yes.
Article six, the F-25 general operating budget. Board of Selectmen 4-1, Finance Committee 5-2. And there's been a lot of discussion about the school budgets, so the floor is yours.
Thank you. So the, just to give you a little background, the Budget Advisory Committee being, there's a committee that meets late summer, early fall each year and they try to identify what the budget parameters should be for the upcoming, upcoming budget process. This year, the Budget Advisory Committee proposed to have a level service budget, meaning no new staffing, no new projects, no new vehicles that were not replacing older vehicles, things of that nature, nothing expanding services that we provide. So that was the budget that the superintendent of schools put together for the school department and that's the budget that I put together for the town. The town's overall budget increase ended up being about 4.5%. The schools were a bit higher than that. So the increase in the overall budget has been frankly very, you know, pretty significant. We go from a $54 million budget to a $57 million budget. Much of that is, you know, there's a larger increase in the school side of things and they've discussed that at their school committee meetings and at FinCom meetings. Ultimately, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee and the School Committee all voted, voted in the majority to support the numbers that were brought forward at town meeting.
And as it relates to the school, does that, if you're, if you know, does that, are there going to be any layoffs?
Uh, there may be. I don't believe there are any layoffs. I believe there are, there are a couple of positions that are unfilled, that won't be filled moving forward.
Somebody retires?
Sure, exactly. But no, no major, no, no significant reductions in staffing at all. They have made some cuts. The School Committee worked with the administration. There's been some cuts made to both the Silver Lake budget and the local school budget to try to get it down to the, to the amount that they're proposing now. And the Board of Selectmen, the FinCom, the majority of them anyways, felt like, felt as though the numbers that were being presented were something that they could support in moving forward. There's been a lot of discussion about, you know, well, why can't we use free cash to reduce the school impact or the town impact for that matter? And, you know, it's, I don't want to get too deep in the accounting stuff, but it's, you know, let's just say, for example, you, you know, you had a huge tax return this year, so you decided to go out, you decide to buy a car and you're going to finance the car over five years. Well, this year is easy to pay off the lease or the, or the amount that you borrowed for this year because you get that huge, huge tax return. Next year, in the years two through five of the, of the car loan, you're not going to have that money. You know, free cash is a one-time source of revenue. At this point, the school department and the town are not looking to use one-time revenues to reduce the amount that's being requested to be spent by taxpayers, because next year, if free cash isn't available, we're already that amount behind the eight ball of the free cash that was used in fiscal '25, against fiscal '25's budget. So there's a lot of money and we'll talk about that in the future. Another article, the capital budget, we're looking at spending $2.2 million in capital, four dump trucks for the Public Works Department being paid for by, in cash, using free cash. I know there's been a lot of questions, why don't we just buy three dump trucks and put that, some of that money, some of that free cash money towards the operating budget? It could be done. It's, I think, I think bad budgeting to do, to use a one-time revenue against an ongoing issue. Our budgets have not increased or inflated artificially this year and we expect them to go down next year. If that was the case, we could use free cash because it's a one-time increase in the budget, it's just not that. So the decision, and the right decision, I think, is to, you know, try to appropriate the money that we can afford this year and not use free cash to, to help offset the tax burden.
Couple of quick questions.
Sure.
What is the levy and what does that mean?
So the levy is, is a number. It's a calculation that's made every year and it's based on what your levy limit was last year. It adds 2.5% to that. It also adds new growth. That's the amount, that's the tax levy limit. You can't assess taxes in total to the town any more than whatever the tax levy limit is. Kingston has been fortunate over the last few years. Our, our levy limit excess, surplus levy limit right now that we've been working with in fiscal '24, it was 2.1, I'm sorry, let me just grab it real quick, I just want to make sure I'm, it was 2.1, almost $2.9 million. We're fortunate that we have that levy limit because if the budgets and all the, all the funding requests were passed as recommended-
You're talking about the $57 million that's printed in the article?
Yeah. That levy limit will drop, that levy, excess levy limit will drop from $2.8 to $600,000. So what does that mean? It means we, that Kingston has been conservative and has established and grown a levy limit to allow for in excess, an increase like this if there was one needed. But moving forward and, and I know there's been members of the FinCom certainly who have said, by using this much of the excess levy limit in one year, while we can do it this year and not, and be able to avoid a Proposition 2.5 override, if the same sort of increase was brought forward next year, there would either have to be significant cuts made or a Proposition 2.5 override proposed and approved to meet the spending limits that were requested. So basically, like I said, we're using, we're using, you know, $2.2 million in levy capacity that we've, that the town has accumulated over the years. We're using, you know, 2.2 of that in one year to balance our budget and not need an override.
So basically, you have $600 left in the, in the tank?
We have $600 left in the tank and that's kind of our buffer, right? So, you know, there, there may be some really tough choices moving forward in the future on budgets. Like as everybody knows, we have a water moratorium right now, so there hasn't been a lot of development that, which, again, new growth helps increase that levy limit. We've benefited from that and that's helped, that's a partial reason why that levy limit has increased to $2.8 million. Without new growth, you know, all we're relying on for the most part is the 2.5% increase in the amount of property taxes we can levy every year. So, you know, we can, so just for an example, in fiscal '24, our levy limit, levy limit was $42,395,000. When you add new growth and you add the 2.5% adjustment for fiscal '25, it moves from 44, from 44, 395 to just over 40, 42, 395, excuse me, to just over $44 million. About $1.7 million is, is what our capacity for our levy limit has increased from fiscal '24 to fiscal '25. So in the past, we've had larger increases because we, we've had, again, just for comparative purposes, fiscal '24, we had new growth of $1.7 million. Fiscal '25, we're estimating $575,000. So, you know, our levy capacity growth, just if, if our new growth turns out to be exactly what we're estimating, you know, we're losing $1.2 million in, in new growth that would have, that would have increased-
Growth, you mean someone builds a house or somebody opens a business?
Yeah. Property values go up, things of that nature. So any new growth, like you said, new, new houses on the, that have been built, new businesses that have been built, that all goes towards a new growth number. Reducing that by $1.2 million from one fiscal year to the next means that our excess levy capacity didn't, didn't increase by that same $1.7 in fiscal '25 as it did in fiscal '24. So those is kind of a, there's a lot of different variables that are going on now that we've got to be very, very sensitive to with regards to our economic future, because we're dealing with, you know, budgets that are growing at a very high rate percentage-wise. We're seeing new growth take a bit of a hit because there isn't a lot of growth going on. And we, so we just need to be very sensitive about how we move forward.
And just to close up with the Article six, the budget, the Silver Lake Regional School District Assessment, the $16 million, if we vote that down, but Halifax and Plimpton agree to it, then we're hooked to that number, correct?
Yeah. So Silver Lake, the Silver Lake budget has to be passed by two, two of the three towns. So no matter what the third town does, if two towns pass that, their, their assessment from Silver Lake, then the third town is bound by it as well.
So if we voted zero for Silver Lake and that's how I voted at town meeting and the other two passed it, then we'd be responsible for that money, correct?
That's correct.
And do you know if their town meetings, one's before and one's after, I believe, right?
I believe you're right, yeah.
So we won't know that answer at town meeting?
We won't.
Anything else about the budget?
No. Again, it's a lot of information. We've put, we've put some information on the website. You know, if people want to get themselves up to speed on what's going on, what's included in the budgets more detailed rather than what's, you know, what makes up the $57 million, we'll have that information on our website in the next week or so. So by, say by May 1st, that information will be up there, certainly no later than, and people can kind of dive in and get a sense of what the increases are. The one thing I guess I would also add, if they don't mind, is the police, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee both supported increasing the police budget to provide for a full-time dispatcher for a full year and a full-time police officer for nine months. The reason nine months for a police officer is it's going to take the police chief and his, and his staff, three, a good three months to actually go through the hiring process, make an offer, have somebody accept it, the background checks and everything that goes with that. And the, the expectation is that that new officer will be going into an October Police Academy for the remainder of 2024 and be back to the town, you know, in '25. So that's what the need for, well, the reason for the nine months of funding was for, instead of a full year.
We'll see how that budget goes, but we do have agreements by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen to support the budget. So moving on to Article seven, that would be part of a consent agenda. And again, that'll be on the website. That is the F-25 Water Department Enterprise Fund Budget. Favorable votes by the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee and the Water Commission, and a lot of people vote on this one, and capital planning. What is this one?
It's the Water Department Operating Budget for the year. So this is, these are the expenses, the breakdown of the expenses they have, the total just over $2.5 million for fiscal '25.
And now we're going to move on to Article eight. And I believe this one's been before town meeting before, but I think the support from the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee and Water Commission has shifted a little on this one. This is the Water Department's request for eminent domain, Article eight, and it requires a two-thirds vote.
So as people may recall, the last couple of years, the Water Commissioners have asked to have a town meeting approve the ability to have them declare an eminent domain on a piece of property that they are, have been seeking to acquire and were in negotiations to acquire before the death of the owner of that property. That property has been identified as a property that has a large aquifer under it that the Water Department could use to drill another well and provide support to the town for municipal My impression is that the town meeting at the time felt as though there wasn't, there hadn't been enough time to allow the, the family members of that estate to, to work through their business and, and get to the point where they were ready to sell the property to, to the town. In this situation, there's one family member of the two who wants to sell it to the town today. There's another family member who I guess is up in the air about that. I think it's appropriate this time to give the, the Water Commissioners the authority for eminent domain. I don't think anybody wants to use that, but unlike the first couple of times they asked, I think at this point, it's becoming more and more critical for the town to try to acquire that property to get that well installed and up and running.
When you say installed up and running, is there a timeframe?
So it's going to take, my understanding is it's going to take two, three, four years from the time we acquire the property and start doing the application process with the state, that the state actually approves the water coming from that well and being, being allowed to be piped into the, into the existing water system to provide additional source of water. So this isn't something you'll see resolved quickly at all. There's a lengthy approval process the Water Department's going to have to go through, but the first step is acquiring that property so we can start the process with the state.
Okay. Moving on to Article nine, that's the Water Department Enterprise Budget, similar to Article seven. This will be on the consent agenda, favorable votes by the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Sewer Commission and Capital Planning. And that's just their budget, right?
Same as the Water Department. It says their operating budget for the year, $4.5 million. And nothing, nothing out of the ordinary in that budget from what has been proposed in the past.
Article 10, also part of the consent agenda, majority vote, Board of Selectmen favorable, and this is the F-25 Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund Budget.
Again, this is a, an article that is approved every year. We have monies, excuse me, that are paid into the town for renewable energy and that money goes back out to the owners of some of those solar and, and wind products. The town keeps a portion of it. The, the rest of the money goes back to the, to the developers themselves. We're also asking for a transfer of $35,000 from free cash to, as part of the payment due to fund the removal of the, the wind turbine that was once the town of Kingston's that sat there for, dormant for nearly a decade.
Okay. Article 11, revolving funds, majority vote, favorable by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. I'm not putting this on the consent agenda, just because I see there's a $200,000 increase in that and I just think maybe a little debate might be warranted on that one. So what do you say about this one?
So the Recreation Department is the department asking for the $200,000 increase. And speaking to the Recreation Director, the Recreation Department is offering more and more programs and the need for additional, an additional expense limit of $700,000 is being requested to address those needs. Again, I just want to make sure people understand and recognize that the $700,000 of revenue that comes, the expenditures that go out, revenues come in to offset that, there's no impact to the taxes whatsoever. It's solely allowing the Recreation Department to offer programs and expend monies on repairs of fields and things of that nature, up to $700,000 rather than up to $500,000. All of that offset by fees that are collected from either the leagues or people using the programs.
So like little league fees?
Yeah.
Soccer fees?
So, you know, the Kingston Youth Association and the Recreation Commission work well together, excuse me, trying to develop a budget for the mains of the fields. And so Kingston Youth Association will pay the Kingston Recreation Department, whatever the agreed about number is, for a portion of the cost to maintain those fields. That money will go into this revolving fund and then the Recreation Director will, will hire a company to mow the fields-
Gotcha.
-to fertilize, things of that nature. Also pay their instructors for, you know, yoga class or whatever.
All right. Take yoga?
No, I'm a more of a riki guy myself, thank you.
Article 12, Establishment Board of Health Revolving, Water Revolving Funds.
Yeah. So we have a new revolving fund this year that we're asking for. Our Board, our health agent is starting to offer some classes for Serve Safe, for restaurants, things of that nature. They'll be taught by our health agent herself, who's Serve Safe certified. The idea with this is to get a better relationship between the businesses and our Board of Health and our health agent. The costs of these programs offset any of the costs for materials and things of that nature. But we think, I think it's a great idea to allow, excuse me, allow the, the health agent to have a revolving fund that would permit her to have programs to benefit those who deal with the health agent on a regular basis.
Okay. And that was favorable by the Board of Selectmen and favorable by the Finance Committee. It's a majority vote. Moving on to Article 13, which is- Moving on to Article thirteen, which is, uh, will be part of a consent agenda. That is Transfer of Employment Liability Reserve Funds, favorable Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee.
So we're asking to increase the li, the, the balance from a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and move free cash and the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to it. Uh, this fund is pay, is used to pay for any accrued vacation time that somebody who leaves employment from the town of Kingston, uh, has on the books. Uh, for longer-term employees, uh, and there are not many of them left, but we do expect a couple of them to retiring next year. Um, they, they get a portion of their sick leave as well. So that's, there, there is no funding in, in any department budget in the general fund to, uh, for, for funding of a, of, of whatever the value is of somebody's vacation time when they leave employment.
Likewise, Article fourteen is Transfer of Post-Employment Health Insurance Liability.
Mm-hmm.
Part of the consent agenda here, favorable by, uh, Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, and I'm guessing that's to take care of retirees' health costs.
It is, because there's a liability there, and every year we, 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 we transfer money from free cash into that to try to pick, peck away at, um, at the liability that's out there.
Moving on to Article fifteen, Transfer to the Stabilization Fund, favorable votes. This would be part of the consent agenda, and this is trying to do what with free cash?
We would take free cash of a hundred thousand dollars, put into our stabilization account. The stabilization account is a kind of an emergency fund that if something were to, significant to happen, and we needed to have available cash um, through an approval of town meeting. Right now, we have three-point-one million dollars in that stabilization fund. That would increase it by a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, again, that is just prudent saving for the town. Um, that if something were to happen that we didn't want to borrow money for, we could go to town meeting and, and seek to, um, access some or all of that three-point-one million dollars if necessary.
Is, is that like a rainy day fund that a state would have?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, worst-case scenario type thing. It's not free cash. Um, it's a, it's a savings account, a rainy day fund that, that, uh, like I said, if something were significant to have happened, um, that money is sitting there to help offset whatever the cost might be to address the situation that occurred.
Gotcha. Article sixteen, Transfer to the Capital Stabilization Fund, approvable consent agenda. Board of Selectmen like it, Finance Committee like it, and it's a, they're...
Another, another housekeeping item, it's a hundred thousand dollars that goes in every year. Um, this is the Capital Stabilization Fund. Uh, right now is basically funding, um, the lease payments that we have in town on some of our, uh, public works and fire vehicles. Uh, we also get meal tax that goes into that Capital Stabilization Account as well. Uh, those revenues, um, help fund, right, right now anyways, the leasing. Ideally, once we get out of the way from the leasing, we'll be able to, uh, use that stabilization fund to put down payments on some of the more expensive uh, fire vehicles that, uh, that we have to purchase from time to time.
Article seventeen, Transfer to the Municipal Building Insurance Fund. Uh, that is favorable Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and it would be part of a consent agenda.
So it's a ten-thousand-dollar request with, is a balance right now of thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, that is to, uh, for, uh, deductibles and things of that nature, if there was damage ever to a town, to a town building. Uh, we've had some of those in the last couple of years with, uh, freeze-ups in the, uh, fire suppression systems in the, in the town, townhouse, and also the, uh, Council on Aging. Uh, we've had to utilize this fund to, uh, to offset our deductible, uh, on those when we had some cold nights and things froze up.
You mean when it rained in your office?
Something like that, yeah.
Article eighteen, Establish Opioid, um, Special Re, Revenue Fund, two-thirds vote, favorable Board of Selectmen, favorable Finance Committee.
So this is kind of a crazy accounting thing. Uh, last year, we asked town meeting to, um, for authorization to open an opioid settlement stabilization fund. Um, what we were trying, what, what the Finance Director was trying to do there was not, we, we received, the town of Kingston receives opioid settlement monies from a lot of the different, um, pharmacies and things of that nature, just like every town in the state does. Um, that, those funds can only be spent for, uh, specific items related to, uh, drug aversion and things of that nature. Uh, initially, that money was going into free cash. Um, we didn't have a vehicle, frankly, to get it out of free cash, so it wasn't over-inflating the number of free cash. We moved it into what was, what we just determined was a, a settlement, opioid settlement stabilization fund. Uh, and then sometime during the second half of two thousand twenty-four, uh, the legislature allowed for the creation of an opioid settlement special revenue fund. So basically, what we're doing is that we're taking it from one fund that, um, that, that, that has the, has these revenues go in, uh, and keep them separate from anything else to a, to a newly approved and a, and appro, more appropriate special revenue fund. Where these funds can be carried over from year, the balances will be carried over from year to year. Um, it can be, and it can only be expended for the specific purposes outlined and mastered and allowed.
Gotcha. Article nineteen is the Capital Equipment Project Funding, F twenty-five, and I'm guessing this is, well, I, I know. This is the towns trying to maintain vehicles and other various equipment.
Yeah, so we've tried in the, in the past few years to, um, be consistent with the amount of money we bring forward. I mentioned it, uh, when we discussed the operating budget briefly. Uh, we're asking this year for, for two-point-two million dollars, which is a bit more than we have in the past. And the, the primary reason for that is the need to replace, uh, four uh, streets, trees, and parks vehicles. Uh, a couple of one-tons, a six-wheel dump truck, and two-ten-wheel dump trucks. Um, they're total just over a million dollars, uh, and uh, unfortunately, those trucks have come to the end of their useful life. We're concerned that they're not, they may not be able to be inspected in the future. Uh, in a couple of cases, some of the six-wheel dump trucks we're looking to replace are over twenty-five years old, and we're unable to get parts at this point for them, and they're not reliable, uh, in the times when we need them most, which is primarily some unexpected snowstorm or other storm. The town of Kingston's been fortunate that we were able to, uh, build up our free cash a bit. Uh, and we're looking to pay free, pay for the four vehicles in cash, um, for two reasons. And frankly, the, the biggest one is we have the money available to do it and still leave, well, a little over a million dollars left in free cash. One of the reason, one of the reasons we're pushing to move four trucks forward this year, other than the reliability, is the federal government has established new emissions standards for diesel-engine vehicles like this. Um, so starting in, in two thousand and twenty-five, and we'll order these trucks in twenty-four, so we'll get into the, under the the, the requirement deadline, if, if we do get approval for these. The emissions are between five and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, increased cost per truck. And in addition to that, historically, for the last few years anyways, the, the vehicles have been increasing at the rate of ten percent inflation. So these, if we buy these trucks cash, we're saving between, uh, say twenty-five and forty thousand dollars a year um, in, in a purchase price of one of these vehicles. So it's a lot of money. We certainly recognize that, but I, I, I can't emphasize enough, I think, that the Capital Planning Committee did a great job at making sure we didn't, um, get in a position where we, we spent too much money this year, didn't have, didn't have the funds available in free cash to have left over in case there was something else that came up.
So that, that, the, one, there's eight items listed, obviously, you can see that, and then there's, uh, it looks like a number of other items listed, and that's, that's just um, nine through fourteen, that's just paid on previous lease agreements, correct?
Yeah, those are, those are the annual payments for existing leases that we have. The total, uh, seven-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, that money, as I mentioned a minute ago, comes out of the Capital Stabilization Account, um, and, like you said, funds, funds the lease payments for the, for fiscal twenty-five.
And moving on to, um, Article twenty, which is F twenty, F twenty-five Equipment Purchase and Project Funding. I don't have a vote from the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee on this document, but we'll...
I believe they were both...
We won't guess. It'll be printed on...
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I think it was one or two that were opposed to, uh, the, the, uh, electronic keypads that are in there. So what we're trying to do, uh, and, and what was asked of the town clerk was to try to modernize things at, at the elections and, and the town meeting. So instead of having pieces of paper, you check off that, um, um, an, an individual comes in, a resident comes in and votes. Um, they'll have, uh, uh, an iPad or something like that, um, that has the voter checklist on it, and they'll pu, simply push, push a button to show the check off that, that you came in to vote. Um, and that information will be downloaded into the database and, and, um, saved for, for, uh, the ability to look back and see who voted this specific election, rather than having to have somebody come back to the office and manually key in, um, that the, that these particular people came and voted that day. The keypads themselves are, uh, handheld devices, um, probably the size of a credit card, a little bit bigger. You bring those, you, you be issued one at a town meeting, uh, and what it does is it counts the votes. So instead of having Paul Basil get up and have to, have to count a certain section of, of the audience to see who's a yea and who's a nay, uh, you push one for yes and two for no, uh, and it tabulates on the screen, uh, what the vote was, so it speeds up, uh, the meeting.
I don't know if it speeds it up. It takes a minute or two, and if you do it on every vote, for example...
You don't have to do it on every vote.
Well, you're gonna have to decide, right?
Yep. I mean, if, I, I think where you'd want to maybe use that is, is if there was a vote, and I've seen, I've seen you have to do this in the past, if it's a vote that you're not comfortable call, calling.
I'd use it on that one.
You could say, you know, we're gonna use the clickers. What it also does, and I've heard it, and, and again, it's, I think there's, there's an argument to be made, pro and con. Some people would prefer to be anonymous when they vote, uh, and they feel pressure about voting a certain way. Um, so they may not vote at all. They may vote against the way they feel. Uh, so some people are com, wish that they could just do it anonymously. This would allow that. Uh, we've also heard conversations during the board meetings that, you know, part of town meeting is raising your hands. So, um, again, this was something that the, the clerk had been asked to bring forward, so he has. Uh, ultimately, if the voters decide they, they don't want to move in that direction, then, then we won't, we won't go in that direction.
Sounds like a plan. We'll see. Um, and that was favorable votes?
I, I believe that it was favorable votes. Uh, I know it was a favorable vote. I believe it was...
Just don't know the exact number.
Those, I don't have the exact count, but there was at least one, maybe two Board of Selectmen members, uh, and potentially one FinCom member who were against that.
Okay.
We'll get that updated.
Will do. Uh, Article twenty-one is the Sampson Fund. This is favorable votes by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. This funds a number of projects throughout the, um, town. It doesn't come out of taxpayer dollars. It comes out of the Sampson Fund, so...
Right.
Great things that, the Gray's Beach Entertainment, the Luminary's, all that stuff comes out of that. Everyone likes it, so that shouldn't pose a problem at town meeting. Article twenty-two is the Community Preservation Committee Administrative Budget Fund Appropriation Projects. Favorable votes by everybody.
Yeah, there's a number of projects here. Um, the first is just the administrative expenses, and we're looking to appropriate that. It's kind of a housekeeping item. The rest of the, uh, the projects, there's an affordable housing, uh, article, just like there is every year, to, to move some money from the, um, CPC money to affordable housing. Um, some repairs to the Bradford House, uh, some funding requests to, uh, potentially acquire a piece of property along the Jones River Corridor for, for their, for its protection. Um, there's a conservation request to, uh, appropriate, uh, twenty, two, two thousand eight-hundred-ninety-five dollars for the Calista Farm, Calista Farm Grassland Restoration. There's a Chimney Swift project for an Eagle Skull project that's being requested. Um, one that's gotten a lot of the conversation frankly, um, is the rehabilitation of the Reed Center Tennis Courts. Tennis courts need to be real rehabilitated. There was questions as to whether or not there's a need to do it this year, and we had competing interests with the recreation on the, on the wells. The CPC was able to fund both projects, so, um, so the, all the committees have voted to support this project.
Pickleball maybe, too.
Pickle, there will be pickleball lines on there for us old guys that can, uh, can't run as far.
Um, my favorite article, Article twenty-three, um, which is the Elected Officials Compensation. It's still, is that right, or is that a typo? It still says a hundred dollars for the moderator, is that?
I, I think...
I think we're missing a couple zeros there.
There might be, and you'll, you'll have an opportunity, if you'd like, to make a motion to amend.
Down. Um, it doesn't seem, I think the only thing is an increase of three-point-eight percent for the, uh, was that the tax collector, maybe?
Collector and treasurer. Collector and clerk.
And clerk. Um, other than that, nothing, no changes, favorable votes, um, on that, correct?
Yes.
Well, let's go to twenty-four, which would be on a consent agenda. That is Wage and Personnel, Bylaw Amendments and Compensation Schedules, favorable by Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and Wage and Personnel.
Mm-hmm.
And that's just non-union people.
Non-union people.
Employees, people.
Yep.
Employees making sure they brought up to market rates.
Yeah, so we're basically providing or recommending the same, um, cost of living adjustment as, as the unions are receiving.
Uh, Article twenty-five is Council on Agents Need for Assessment, Age, Dementia Friendly Kingston. Um, not supported by the Board of Selectmen or the Finance Committee, and it looks like the, um, thirty-five thousand dollars to fund a needs assessment survey of residents fifty-five years of older as part of an accreditation process to become age and dementia-friendly community.
So the, the Council on Agents is trying to move towards, um, having Kingston become a designated as an age and dementia-friendly community. The first step in doing that is to have a survey done, um, by an outside organization. There's a, uh, a college in Massachusetts that's doing some of this work. Uh, at this point, the, the board and the FinCom felt as though, with all the other asks that were out there, that this could be deferred a year, uh, potentially seek other funding sources, uh, rather than free cash. So, uh, the, the Council on Agents may ask to have, to, to, uh, to pass over this article, not sure. Uh, but it did not get support from either the FinCom or the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Article twenty-six, Increase Senior and Veteran Property Tax Work Off. Favorable votes by Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and it looks like it was previously approved at town meeting of a thousand, and you're looking to increase it to one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
So, uh, a couple of years ago, the state increased the, uh, the senior and veterans' work-off amount from seven-fifty to fifteen-hundred. Um, last year, we moved from seven-fifty to a thousand. This year, we're looking to move from a thousand to twelve-fifty, and then ultimately, you'll probably see another article on the two thousand twenty-five town meeting warrant to move it from twelve-fifty to fifteen-hundred.
Do a number of people take part in this program?
Not enough, and, and I think one of the things that we want to try to make people aware of, more aware of, that are eligible for this, is that this program's available for you. You know, one of the concerns that we've heard during the budget process is, you know, the impact on everybody, but specifically the seniors. Um, this senior work-off program, we try to, uh, match a skill set that you have, um, with a need the town has, and you work, uh, at the equivalent of minimum wage, and work the number of hours you need to work to earn up to twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which gets credited from your tax bill. So, um, there are a number of seniors who take advantage of it, and veterans, it's available for veterans as well. Uh, for those who are in, who, who are eligible. One of the things I think it's gonna be important over the next couple of months is to make people more aware of this program. Um, and it's, it's something that, anybody who is eligible for something like this, there is no wage restrictions, uh, on the senior situation. It's, it's a, it's an, it's an opportunity for somebody to re, to be able to reduce the amount of money that they're, that they're li, that they're liable for in their property taxes. In, in an ideal world, doing something they enjoy doing.
Makes sense. Uh, Article twenty-seven, Recision of the Borrowing Authorization, favorable votes. This would be part of a consent agenda. The mic is yours.
So the, uh, this, this article, back two or three years ago, there was a request to, uh, construct a cold storage building behind the town, townhouse uh, to replace the Maple Street Fire Station, which is being used for cold storage now. Uh, we thought the cost would be about four-hundred-and-twenty, four-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars. Uh, when we actually got some bids, the bids were one and a half to two times that amount. Uh, with everything else we have going on, I just frankly can't recommend spending seven-hundred-and-fifty to a million dollars on a cold storage building. Uh, not our priority, so we're looking to rescind this, clean up our books, uh, in that regard, and, and continue to use the Maple Street Fire Station as cold storage.
Okay. Moving on to Article twenty-eight, Waterways Improvement Funds Appropriation. Uh, majority vote would be on a consent agenda, as there's unanimous approval from the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee.
So again, a couple of years ago, this, uh, Waterways Improvement Fund was established. It, what it does is it transfers money from the Waterways Fund into this, uh, annual appropriation. It, it gets carried over from year to year. What it allows for is it allows the, the Waterfront Committee, Water, uh, along with the Board of Selectmen, if there's an issue. We had an issue, for example, a couple of years ago, where we had an engine in one of the Harbor Master boats, um, break and not be able to be fixed, so we had to buy a new motor. Having a, a balance of thirty-five thousand dollars to spend, or up to thirty-five thousand... Having a, a balance of thirty-five thousand dollars to spend, or up to thirty-five thousand dollars to spend in a year, allows the, the Harbor Master and the Waterways Committee to make unexpected, uh, uh, unanticipated purchases and/or repairs to, uh, the property down there. All that money is collected through, you know, moorings and, and things of that nature. So there, again, no tax money involved here, it's moving from the Waterways Fund to a, a Waterways, you know, reserve account that gives them immediate access if there was a need to, to expend money for a specific purpose, rather than having to wait the town meeting every year.
Gotcha. Article twenty-nine, adopt and change to general bylaws, majority vote, Board of Selectmen approves this. It would be on a consent agenda. And it's just a minor bylaw change, isn't it?
Yeah, so we have, so the town clerk has been working for a number of years with, um, a company who handles updating bylaws and, and what this is, and we'll have information attached to the handout that we give out. Basically, it, it, it modifies, some of the, the bylaws that need to be modified, punctuation, grammatical issues, grammatical issues, references to appropriate, uh, mass general laws, things of that nature, uh, is, is what that is. It's not changing, uh, the intent of the bylaw at all. It's, it's, it's just revising, uh, the bylaws to make them, uh, up to date and accurate. And the second one frankly is, we're just gonna renumber them, if, if they approve this, they'll be renumbered.
You jumping ahead of Article thirty?
I couldn't wait for any longer. We're trying to, uh, just renumber the bylaws, so, uh, the bylaws flow more appropriately than they do now. So it's just a, a kind of a housekeeping thing that the clerk's gonna work on for a while.
I'm not gonna let you call the next one.
I'm glad.
So thirty's similar, that would be part of the consent agenda, favorable, um, but I'm gonna have to put you on a leash if you keep calling. Thirty-one is, oh, here we go, amendment to the animal control bylaw. Favorable vote, and look, it involves leashes.
So what we're trying to do is, uh, the, the animal control officer has asked to, we're having more and more of an issue with dogs off leashes. Right now, there's, there's simply just a, a small fifty dollar fine, no matter how many times they're off leash. What we're looking to try to do here is have the first offense be fifty dollars, second offense be a hundred dollars, and the third offense be three hundred dollars. Just to try to unfortunately, um, have dog owners be more aware that their dog is gonna be on a leash, uh, for the protection of the dog and for the protection of others. And we've had to unfortunately potentially increase the, the penalty for that to try to, um, have people become more aware that the issue's a problem.
Article thirty-two, designate authorized offer to negotiate and execute solar pilot agreements, favorable vote, Board of Selectmen.
So again, we, we have had pilot agreements in the past that have come in front of the town meeting for approval, rather, to try to expedite the process of pilot agreements. What this article is asking for is for, uh, the town meeting to authorize the Board of Selectmen and/or the Board of Assessors to, uh, negotiate, uh, solar pilot agreements, or pilot agreements, I shouldn't say, yeah, solar pilot agreements specifically. So we have one at the old transfer station, for example, that had to get approved at town meeting. That would could be, could be approved just by the Board of Selectmen and/or the Board of Assessors moving forward.
Is there a limit to the, the size or the scope, meaning if they wanted to put a ginormous one in that they'd need town meeting? Or is it just given the Board of Selectmen the ultimate authority?
They're giving the Board of Selectmen the authority, there is no limitation on size of the, of the field.
Okay. That was favorable by the Board of Selectmen. And that is Article thirty-two. Thirty-three is approve and authorize the acquisition of easements, two-thirds votes, sewer commission. Favorable Board of Selectmen, favorable sewer commission.
So this article is, um, more of a housekeeping article. The sewer commission is getting, is getting ready to begin the construction of their leaching fields. They were approved last year. This, uh, our town attorney has asked that we place this particular article in the warrant to make it a little clearer as to, uh, the authority that the sewer commission has to access the, the right of way on, over Country Club, Country Club Way and, and the easement that, that the town owns to get to the, uh, the property that the.
Leaching fields?
Leaching fields we built on. Thank you.
And that was Article thirty-three.
So the last article on, uh, the town meeting warrant this year for consideration, and I think the moderator has mentioned he's gonna try to move that up if the, uh, members of the audience at town meeting are supportive of that, will be to have, uh, the town consider, um, adopting an accessory dwelling unit, um, bylaw that's been discussed by the, by, and approved by the planning board and the Board of Selectmen. So with us, joining us, uh, joining Sean and I now is our town planner, Valerie Masard. Valerie, uh, has been working on this now for quite some time. And, um, hoping she can provide a, a brief explanation about what the intent of this, of this bylaw change will, will mean to, to property owners in town.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanna clarify one point, that it's, we already have an ADU bylaw on the books, and this is a modification.
Great.
Yeah.
You wanna explain it to, to what's gonna happen pursuant to the, this article?
Yeah, the idea with this article is that the, uh, planning board approached, uh, me, along with the building commissioner, and asked that we work on a modification to the ADU bylaw, which is accessory dwelling unit, to allow for more flexibility in the town, because we have a lot of residents looking to try to do an accessory dwelling unit on their property. So right now, it's allowed in the R twenty, R forty, and R eighty zoning districts. And it's allowed to be attached to the existing single-family dwelling. And you can have one unit as a special permit process. The idea here is that we would allow it in some more districts and reduce the lot size minimum from the twenty, forty, and eighty that you see in those districts now to twenty across the board. And also have some flexibility in the setbacks to allow for older homes to be able to fit into this category of having the possibility to ask for a special permit for an accessory dwelling unit. Slightly changing the size from five hundred square feet minimum to three hundred and fifty square feet minimum to be consistent with the rest of the South Shore. And we're also looking at the possibility of detached accessory dwelling units so that you could use, say, the space over a separate garage that you have on your property as an accessory dwelling unit by converting above or converting the garage into a unit, for example.
So our, I just wanna make sure for us novice people, uh, like myself, R twenty, R forty, and R eighty means, they're different districts in town, but the twenty, forty, and eighty means the square footage of the lot. So twenty thousand square foot lot, forty thousand square foot lot, eighty thousand square foot lot. So what this, what this is proposing is, um, that a twenty thousand square foot lot could, may be able to be eligible for either a detached or an attached accessory dwelling unit.
There's still lot coverage requirements, setback requirements. There has to be utilities, and there still has to be an architectural fit with the other house. There also has to be, uh, and hasn't changed, a thirty percent cap on the finished product in terms of the two units together, only increasing by thirty percent in terms of livable space. And that doesn't include closets or unfinished basements and the like.
So it's a, it's a big, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, potentially a significant change. And a couple of things that I just would make, make, make people aware of, I guess. First and foremost, Valerie put a slideshow together, she showed it to the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. We'll have that loaded up on the town website so people can get a better sense of.
Yeah, it's on the planning department website now.
Second thing, I guess, is a question that I think you can answer. You know, the, the general, the general reason this is being brought forward for consideration is what?
Well, we only have six or seven units, uh, in all the years that we've had this on the books. And what we've found is that there are quite a few people who've come close to complying, but they can't convert, say, space within an existing home because of the requirements for parking to be in the rear of the dwelling, for example. Here, we're saying that they could use the existing parking lot as long as there's enough space in the driveway, as long as there's enough parking spaces. Little things like that that are preventing people from being able to even request a special permit. So I'm responding to those bits of feedback from the planning board, from the building commissioner, that we have, uh, quite a few, not hundreds, but maybe ten, um, residents looking to try to make a conversion on their home. And it's still gonna be requiring to have a four out of five planning board support. It's a special permit, there's still a butter notification, there's still discussion, um, and the butters have standing. But the idea is that more people could apply for the possibility of having an ADU. There's a need, we have, um, housing prices at, on the median market price is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Kingston. Two fa- a two-bedroom home has, uh, excuse me, a one-bedroom home has gone up sixty-six percent in asking price since last year, this time. We see that the prices have gone up, they went up eighteen percent in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, and they continue to go up, not quite at that rate, but the prices continue to go up on a ten percent ratio when you get to the higher number of bedrooms. And it's outstripping the capacity of people to, uh, afford to live in a home. So this is an idea where people could bring a family member and have their in-laws or someone else live with them. And this is different than, uh, a, an in-law, uh, unit where it has to have a separate entrance. An in-law would have a similar entrance, common entrance with the main house. This is a separate entrance altogether, a completely self-contained, separate unit. And that was, what makes it a little bit different. So you could downsize into that part of the house and rent out the other part of the house, or vice versa.
And one of the, uh, one of the two dwelling units on that property has to be, um, has to be, has to be occupied by, by the owner of the property.
Yes.
Okay.
So a couple of questions, I'm, just maybe because my job, I'm a devious criminal attorney, but I don't vote at town meeting, I'm the moderator. But I, I think the way this was written and the way they presented it, it makes sense. You know, your, your mother's older, you can get her to your, your house. But on the flip side, builders, developers, and lawyers are gonna use this as loopholes. So for example, if I have a forty thousand square foot lot, which I do, and I have a three thousand square foot house, which I don't know if I do, but maybe, I could conceivably build another house on that at a thousand square feet, and I could move in my sister and her two kids and put them in the school system.
You could, that's a thirty percent ratio, and yes, the, the planning board discussed whether or not to cap it at twelve hundred square feet, for example, or eight hundred square feet, like some other communities do. They chose not to, they're using the thirty percent ratio, so you're absolutely right.
And then who's gonna go and enforce, like, so, so say under that scenario, and again, I don't vote at town meeting, but just information is power. Say I bring my mother into my main house, or my sister into that one, and I'm living somewhere else, who's gonna enforce whether or not it's owner occupied or not?
Every year, they're required to come back and certify that the owner is living at the property. And that's gonna be enforced through the planning board and the building department, as it is now.
But you, in, in essence, in a single zoned area, you could basically have two properties on one.
That's already the case.
But you had to, you, you can go through the zoning board of appeals for that, correct?
Planning board.
Planning board. So why do we need this then if it's already the case?
We're trying to make it so that more people could apply to do it. Right now, only a handful, say about six or seven people, have been able to apply for and successfully get an accessory dwelling in it. We think there might be another ten, twenty that have been coming by that are looking to try to do an accessory dwelling in it. There may be more, but we don't expect to see a, a large number of these come through. We haven't seen that yet, and we don't expect to see this as a result of these changes, but we're hoping to make some adjustments to accommodate more residents.
So I guess I, I just wanna maybe touch on one quick thing that both of you guys have brought up. You know, I think this is being brought forward to allow, uh, property owners some flexibility. Whether it be to downsize on the same lot and rent their house that they're living in now, downsize and allow, uh, family members, uh, or others to live and, or rent the, the existing house. Rent the house and make money, frankly, right? But to your point, Sean, I, there's, there's no question that if this were to pass, there could be somebody out there who, you know, who, who intends to remain on the property, at least initially, rent the, the smaller unit or the larger unit, live in one, say they're living in one, and then potentially lie on the certification they submit every year. It's a, it's a, it's an enforcement issue we'll have to deal with. We open ourselves up a little bit to that, but to Valerie's point, you know, we're trying to provide this as another option for people who wanna live in the, you know, on the property they're in, and, and.
And we already have that option.
No, I guess my next question would be, say you take an area like, uh, forty B, like nobody else circle, they have, I lived in one, they have a fourteen, you know, thousand, fourteen hundred square foot house. Those things are listed now at six hundred thousand, they probably pay eight thousand dollars a year in taxes. If I put that similar house on my lot, which I'm not too far off, I'd have to down it maybe to a thousand, it's not gonna be taxed the same way as it would be on a forty B.
So I don't know the answer to that question, because I'm not an assessor.
But it wouldn't be a, a separate property, it would just be something else on the property, right?
It's always gonna remain one lot.
So it'd be one lot, and I, and I would, I would, I believe, and I, I'm not an assessor either, but I believe that the value of the house would be, would be calculated the same as the, as the existing house would be. The difference would be, um, it, it would, in all likelihood, not have a land value, because that land value is being carried by the lot that, for the original home. So, um, the values of the property would be, the values of the, of the structure would be calculated the same, but it probably wouldn't have a land value.
And if you put one or two kids into the school system on that rental property, it's a negative for the town.
At the end of the day, I agree with you, I'm not trying, and I'm not trying to argue two, uh, for or against this, this article, but I would also suggest that most residential houses in the community are a cash flow negative if they have children in the schools.
I'll just note too.
I'm hurting the town a lot.
If I can.
Certainly, yeah, I don't know.
Can I share that we don't have an increased number of students? We actually have less students in the last decade than we have had in the last three decades.
I don't vote at town meeting, I just think this could be a very good thing for the, the town, but if manipulated and used the wrong way, this could, this could hurt the town. And I just think, um, I'm glad you're here, you, you made a good explanation of it. I'd like to bring this forward at town meeting, um, earlier, just like maybe slightly after the budget, 'cause I think it could have a significant impact on the town. And however the voting audience votes, it's fine by me. But I just, you know, the, the positives and the negatives of this, I just wanted to kinda air that out and.
Yeah, well, I think it's great.
I think you've put a lot of work into this, and I thank you for coming here and explaining it. But again, it's my deceptive side that just concerns me.
Right, and we already have exposure to those things that you mentioned already. So we already have this on the books, we already allow it in, in the town.
Anything else you have on this?
I don't, thank you for having me.
No, thank you for coming, appreciate it. So those are thirty-four, um, articles, which will be decided, um, at the town meeting on May eleventh at nine o'clock in the morning. I was listening, uh, to some of the meetings, and I'm not, I don't know who said it, but, you know, someone was saying, you know, overrides and, you know, what's going on in the world? Elections have consequences, and at the federal level, whether the money's going to the United States or the countries, or the state level where they put their fundings, these elections have consequences. And it starts at town meeting, it starts locally. So I encourage everyone to come, um, and vote and be heard on May eleventh at nine AM at the Kingston Intermediate School. And any final last words from our town administrator?
No, I just wanna thank, uh, everybody, you know, from the department heads to the Board of Selectmen, the FinCom, and all the comments we've heard from the public, uh, in, in the budget process. It's been, you know, a long few months, but looking forward to having a town meeting occur in a couple of weeks and, uh, try to get moving from there.
We're over by fifteen minutes.
Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you.